This conference will now be recorded.
Just wanted to make you. It was taken. Is it? Recording? It is recording. I will call the meeting of June 3, 2024, in the city. Call the order.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has been one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Anyone have any modifications to the agenda? Approval of the minutes of regular session, May 20, 2024. Any corrections, additions? To public comment, citizens appearing before council, agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during council, during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Anyone in chambers? Alone? Okay. We have no public hearing, so we're on to consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,816,449.49, unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B, approval of the cemetery deed number 0301, buy-in between the City of Alpena and Linda Courier and Owen Worth in the amount of $745 for Block 40, Lot 54, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. C, approval of the cemetery deed number 0302, buy-in between the City of Alpena and Jay and Lynn Robarge in the amount of $745 for Block 40, Lot 163, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. D, approval of the cemetery deed number 0303, buy-in between the City of Alpena and Robert and Travis Schilling in the amount of $745 for Block 40, Lot 240, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, unauthorized Mayor Johnson to sign said deed. A portion of $83,754.95 from the estate of Edward Rieslack within the general fund for the building improvements to City Hall, and we thank the family for that. F, postage machine from Pitney Bowes, Inc., for a total amount of $11,077.80 for the term of 60 months, unauthorized Anna Soick, Clerk Treasurer, Finance Director, to sign that agreement. G, a noise ordinance variance request for Joe's Bar on June 29, 2024, from 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. H, budget amendment request to transfer $267,913 from the general fund to the equipment fund and commit it for the purchase of fire apparatus. I, budget amendment request to transfer $65,748 from the general fund to the local streets fund and commit it for the extension of Hamlock Lane. J, 2024 tax rate request, unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the document.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Now we're up to presentations. Tonight, we have Detective Lieutenant Stewart Sharp of the Michigan State Police, and he is going to give us the here on Undercover Narcotics 2023 annual report.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm gonna try to get through this, a lot of coffee and shit. So, did everybody get a copy of the annual report? It looks like it, right? Okay, so it's probably bad for me, because you can check my information as we go here. Hunt's a multi-jurisdictional task force, and we cover Alcona, Alpena, Mount Marcy, and Preskeel County. I currently serve in that role for Sane Narcotics, which is Charlevois, Emmett, Atsigo, and Shpoigan Counties as well. So, I'm kind of stretched through northeastern Michigan. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with Hunt, but it's a multi-jurisdictional task force. We have a 12-member executive board that governs essentially operations. We have an advisory panel, which is made up of councilmen and what have you. So, our funding source is primarily the Burn-Jag criminal justice grant and contributions from each of the entities. We greatly appreciate Alpena's participation in that. So, in 2023, we had a total of 65 investigations, and if you look at the annual report, as early as 2019, we were in the 160, 170 range. COVID, I think, did a number on everyone, probably for us. It's most reflected in maybe staffing levels. So, investigations by jurisdiction, which is an important part, is 48% of our investigations are conducted within the City of Alpena. An additional 25% are in Alpena County. So, majority of our work is in Alpena County, and specifically the City of Alpena. 76% of our investigations are methamphetamine. That's a stark difference between as far back as 2017, 2016. 51 of our investigations were drug-related investigations into the distribution of narcotics. We had eight fugitives that we arrested and six other cases that were non-drug related, and those were such as domestic violence, armed persons, some search warrants where we assisted other agencies, some involvement in homicide, child sexually abusive material, and weapons offenses. So, one of our goals on top of drug disruption, the disruption of the distribution of drugs, is to assist other agencies. We're kind of a multifaceted group of detectives that can utilize covert surveillance, if you will, electronic surveillance and other methods. So, we try to avail ourselves to other agencies to support them in any of the other non-drug cases that we have. So, when we move to arrests, we had 52 arrests last year with 87 counts. Majority of those persons that we arrest ultimately end up in the penitentiary as opposed to the county jail. When we look at arrests by jurisdiction, 52% of our arrests are in the City of Alpena with an additional 25% in Alpena County. So, again, predominantly, our arrests and our cases are initiated in the City of Alpena and then the county of Alpena. In 44 total searches, 25 of those were search warrants. 19 were consent searches that we conducted in 2023. Seized property and forfeiture were considerably low in 2023, and that's directly related to methamphetamine and the chemical drugs. The dealers do not have the kind of proceeds. They do not have vehicles that would be worth forfeiting and trying to sell later. Street value of the drugs, $54,022. Majority of that was 376 grams of methamphetamine. Street value of a little over $37,000. So, when we look at significant activity, the first page references crystal meth, and it gives a description of what meth does and the addictive qualities. But what I find quite important here is that prior to 2018, we were encountering a lot of meth labs. That means methamphetamine was manufactured locally. Post-2018, and through the pandemic, there's been a surge of methamphetamine to the United States, for whatever reason you may determine. It's become incredibly cheap and easy to obtain, so our users are traveling downstate, and downstate dealers are traveling to our area. So, our cases drastically increased, with the exception of '21, I believe, of the possession and delivery charge as opposed to the manufacturing with a laboratory, if that makes sense. So, we highlight some cases. The first case is quite complicated. However, distributor from the Saginaw area was tied in with a number of people, and we were able to intercept him when he was on his way up here by means of a search warrant. We examined his phone. We came across child sexually abusive material. We found that that material had been manufactured by his girlfriends, and that was the girlfriend's child. Upon further investigation, we found at least four other victims that were in the Saginaw, Bay City area. That individual is now in the custody of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, awaiting charges formally for child sexually abusive material. So, that was quite an extensive case. Locally, we ran into a group of individuals that were distributing meth in Alpena Township. We arrested six people, and ultimately, the first suspect got 85 months to 20 years in prison. A second subject got 12 months in jail. Third subject got 50 months to 20 years in prison. Fourth subject got 51 months to 20 years in prison. Fifth subject, 18 months to 20 years in prison. The sixth subject, 18 months to 20 years in prison. And they were all local individuals. We had, through Preskeel, we had been introduced to a Haitian gang member from the Saginaw area by an informant in Preskeel County. We were able to purchase multiple ounces of methamphetamine, some heroin, some cocaine. We ultimately purchased from that subject who conveyed it from Saginaw to Preskeel, and then we made another attempt in Alcona County, and they brought up another additional ounces of drugs. They were arrested there, currently pending court proceedings in Preskeel, but is in prison for the Alcona event. So, the very last page is what we termed as bad intentions, and some friends of the Haitian gang member who are on the periphery of the Haitian gang decided that they would take his spot and offer to sell us methamphetamine. Well, they showed up three people with masks and no drugs to sell us with the intent to rob us. We did not find weapons, but that occurred in rural Alcona County. Kind of thumbnail, is there questions that I can answer?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either. I appreciate the report.
Mitchell doesn't have a question?
We appreciate the report.
Certainly.
Very good report. I'm just, of course, it's the population in the City of Alpena that has a lot to do with the.
Yeah, I'd like to stand up here and give you my opinion on a lot of that. I'm very proud of what the officers have done. I'm very proud of Chief Hamp and his contributions to our team, but I cannot say that I'm pleased with the participation in our team. So, there's some hamstringing, if you will, by virtue of the amount of people that I have to lead this little issue. I generally don't discuss how many people are on my team, but the more I had, the better I could do. And it's everywhere right now. It's very pervasive. We're doing the best we can on those that distribute it, so.
Is it because meth is cheaper to purchase, just like this? Is the reason it's more?
Well, that's, yeah, the addictive qualities. You know, it's akin to heroin, when you talk about addiction. It's cheap. It's very cheap. So, we buy meth. Meth is sold up here for $100 a gram. There's 28 grams in an ounce, and you can buy an ounce in Bay City for $300. I'm not a mathematician, but if I was a businessman, I mean, you could make $2,500 of profit if you didn't consume your product by bringing it up here. So, and that's what we're really battling right now, is that the downstate organizations, drug trafficking organizations view this as a way to make money, and this is an untapped environment that pays very high. So, if you could get a gram in Saginaw for $20, it's worth the chance to establish a connection up here and get $100 for a gram. That's what we're facing, and that's the harsh reality of it. Thanks.
These are not Flintstone vitamins in the picture.
On all where? Vitamin cases don't really hold water. Not opposed to crack. That's false.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to receiving file, Hunt's 2023 Annual Report.
Our motion to accept the report as drafted, sent it.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Down to announcements. The term for mayor and two councilmembers will expire on December 31, 2024. The deadline for city candidates who are nominated by petition to the November general election is July 23, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. Nonpartisan nominating petitions and affidavits of identity forms are available in the city clerk's office. We have no proclamations, and now we're done to report. We have Anna Soick, Clerk Treasurer, Finance Director, is going to tell us about early voting changes and election worker compensation.
I kind of rolled two subjects into one, under one umbrella here. So, that's why there's two motions at the end of this. At the May 6, 2024, meeting, I presented the costs of the presidential primary election and also informed the council that I entered into an agreement with the Charter Township of Alpena. At that time, my understanding was that I, as the clerk, was able to make that decision, which I did, and signed an agreement with the township. According to a news update from the Michigan Bureau of Elections received on May 24, approval is needed by the city council, and that's just to change the early voting site. To be fully compliant, I respectfully request your approval to move the early voting site location to the Charter Township of Alpena. So, the second topic is, at the January 29, 2024, meeting, I requested an increase to the election workers' wages, which was approved. Since we are combining efforts with the township for early voting, I would like to request an additional increase in compensation for the city's election workers. I believe that the city's workers should be paid the same amount as township workers, at least for early voting, but would also like to see the increase applied to Election Day as well. Our workers will be performing the exact same work as the township workers and therefore should be compensated equally. Also, I would hope that by equalizing the wages between both municipalities, that this would eliminate the possibility of losing any workers due to wage differences. The city's current hourly wages are $12 for election inspectors, $1,375 for deputies, and $1,584 for chairs. The township's hourly rates are $13 for election inspectors, $14 for deputies, and $16 per hour for chairs. As you can see, our deputies and chairs are very close to the township's rates, but the election inspector rate needs to increase substantially, so a dollar an hour. The election inspectors are very dedicated to their important roles, and I feel the increase is warranted and fair. Training will remain at minimum wage of $10.33 per hour.
Quick question, if I may. How are you staffed currently? I mean, are you full up? Still in need of more volunteers for election workers?
We lost some, just, I don't, of no particular reason that I can think of. Maybe they just wasn't interested to do it again, but we had enough for the presidential primary, although we had some snowbirds that were in other states. They're coming back, so they need to be trained. I'd say we're pretty close, but if anybody wants to turn in an application, I certainly welcome that, and we'll try to get them trained for the next two elections.
Okay, and the training entails how much?
It is three hours of training. I did the last one for the presidential primary, and now the county clerk is, she's gonna do the training for this one. It's just to catch those that didn't get training, because when I did it or when she does it, they're certified for two years. So, yeah.
Yeah, and counsel, I would also like to see these changes that we make to the hourly wages and so on permanent for the entire election. I don't think that it doesn't serve any of us well if we were to raise it up to match the township and then when our elections start coming around. So, I think these are fair. Unlike many of our other departments and such, we always try to compare the local communities, so that's where I'm at. I don't know if everyone's in agreement with that.
Yes.
So, do we need to change anything in that? But I would like to see that stay permanent.
I just think whoever makes that motion, just add it to the end of it. Okay, so we'll take, does anyone have any questions for Anna?
I do think it is included in the recommended motion, partially, Mike, what you were addressing.
I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I move, go ahead with the motion then. Move that the early voting site location for all city voters to the Charter Township of Alpena for all future elections.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
So, for the second motion, we could just include that one propositional phrase for all future elections. Would that work for you?
It would work for the clerk, I believe.
Would it work for the clerk?
Would for me.
Okay. Would you like me to?
So, I usually, I usually do come back every other year to request an increase.
So, should we do it?
Do it for 2024, 2025 elections? Would that, or is it next year, or we back up?
Until change is requested.
Yeah. I do want to keep an eye on what the township is doing, too. If they raise theirs, they'll have to look at raising theirs as well.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, we could say all future elections, subject to change.
We're always. It's always, yes.
Great. I'll go ahead. I move that we increase the hourly wages to $13 for election inspectors, $14 for deputies, and $16 for chairpersons for all future elections, unless there is a change in circumstance.
Second. Any more discussion on that? Go ahead, Anna.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Thank you. Under B, council policy statement number 18 revision, local bidders preference and attorney bill.
These are proposed revisions to Council Policy 18, which is the policy for purchase and sales, including contracts let out by the city. So, on page 14, under D, local bidders preference, we thought that that was the most prudent one to look at immediately. There may be other things that we bring back to council by as to this policy. It's a pretty long policy, but because the local bidders preference came up recently, we wanted to at least attack that one first and kind of solidify the language, make sure that there was no misunderstanding about how it was supposed to work. So, if you look at the top of page 15, under B, there would be a sentence added that says no bid amount will be decreased below the amount of the original lowest bid. You may recall recently where we had two bidders that were actually the two lowest bids, but also they both wanted to use the bidder's preference to get lower than the other one. And so, you know, we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that if you invoke the bidder's preference, you could do that, but you can't invoke it to get below the lowest bid and attempt to, I don't want to say steal the bid, because that sounds a little more nefarious, but just so that we don't go below that original low bid. So, if it's a low bid, I win the low bid for a local business. You can trump my bid or tie my bid, I should say, but it doesn't then allow me to go back if I'm a local business, and so then I'll lower my bid, too. So, that language was added. And then there was some language added under what is considered to be the local bidder preference, specifically number five was added, which just says that businesses shall regularly be conducted at the legal and permanent address located in the county of Alpena that was listed on the bid documents. And business activity at that location shall be consistent with the nature and type required by the project. So, we wanted to make sure that we weren't allowing somebody to simply say, I bought a house now, running that house out, but I'm using that as my address for business purposes, and I'm conducting business there. The nature of that business that's conducted within the city or the county has to be consistent with what business they're actually operating and what they're actually bidding on. So, we just wanted some clarification of that. And so, those are for council's consideration. If you want to pass this, you can pass it tonight. We would not need a second reading, because it's not an ordinance, it's just a policy.
Does anyone have any suggestions, concerns, discussions?
I liked the rewording. It reflects what we did discuss last go-round in a nice way, in a positive way, and it does help to help us skirt those who skirt.
Very clear, very precise. I think that adds a lot of value to the council and to the staff, too, so they don't have to guess what is and what is not, so. No other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, I'm good.
I'm good with it.
I did have questions when I first read through it, but the way Bill presented it kind of, I don't know, it alleviated my questions. I just, I didn't find that five was entirely clear, just with my legal hat, which I just, I was confused by it. Business shall be regularly be conducted at the legal and permanent residence located in the county of Alpena. So, that's applicable to whether you're requesting the city or the Alpena County business preference. So, obviously, as long as it's under the umbrella of Alpena County, it's, you know, you have to be within the city. Got it? I thought that needed to be detailed better earlier, but, and then, just in my mind. And then, I was confused, too, with the business activity of this location shall be consistent with the nature and type required by the project. I thought, well, the nature and type of the project, I mean, the way you explained it satisfied my concern. I just was thought, well, if you're bidding for something, that that's not necessarily the type of use that you're using for the building that you're renting or that you own in the City of Alpena, let's say, and you're trying to get that preference. But it's mostly just, if it's a construction project, then the business that you're using that building for must be for your construction business. Okay?
Even if it's just their office?
Because, yeah. Yep.
If one somebody does, it's a, you know, I hate to use example, because it came up recently, and it'll sound like I'm maybe signaling now one of the businesses, but if you started a lawn care business that's somewhere in town, and then you're bidding on a road project, and you're saying, well, that's my business, I do lawn care out of there, but you're not bidding on lawn care with the city, you're bidding on construction metrics, and you shouldn't be doing that work out of that business if you want to enforce it.
I appreciate the clarification after my concerns and what I spoke out against for the previous signal, and so I think it covers it well enough that way.
So, any other discussion?
I would like to move that we adopt Council Policy Statement Number 18 revision, local bidders preference.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Let me take four.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Kane.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Noak.
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek.
Aye.
Okay, and now we're down to council committee report, so can't remember what side I saw. I'm gonna start with Aaron this time. If you have something to report, if you don't have anything, then we'll move on.
I will, um, just articulate everything that was stated by, uh, regarding.
Okay. You know?
By, by Detective Lieutenant Stuart Sharp.
Any, do you have anything?
Uh, it's gonna be discussed by Montiel, so, uh, I'll refer to her.
And the only thing I had, have is we had e-waste cleanup day this last Saturday. Um, we had two hundred and fifteen cars, I believe. We don't have the numbers pulled together, but hopefully by the time our next council will have numbers from, um, cleanup day, e-waste day, um, and be able to report all of those, but, um, it was a good day.
It's a lot of cars.
I asked a question concerning the recycle bins being relocated from.
Yeah, let me, let me talk about that. So we were asked to move them from Neyman's by, by the, um, current people who are using the building and, and that's fine. Um, we are on private, private property and we really appreciate when we're allowed to be there. Um, so we had to move them. So we moved them to Northern Lights, um, in discussion with the board. We have a lot of issues with people dumping stuff outside of the bins, et cetera. Um, we are going to, all the bins that are located within the city will now be at Northern Lights. Um, and if you go to Northern Lights, and I'm there almost every day, um, the site is much cleaner, um, traffic, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. So I think people, um, are less likely to throw stuff on the ground that they're not supposed to throw on the ground. So I think it's kind of a little bit of self policing that's in our favor. And with that many bins at one spot, um, we can send our driver over there to haul those bins. Um, there should always be empty bins now, so you're not going to a site and this one's full and go to the next site and this one's full. And so far, it seems to be working out really well. Um, and we'll continue this until we open our new facility. We do have a new truck coming, um, but will alleviate some of our, when the truck is down, the bins get full. Um, we hope to have that maybe by the end of June, early July. We just got.
Just got an update and we're waiting on the adjustable JIB, whatever that is, to arrive. So, um, I'll have an update on delivery soon, but we were hoping for June.
Yeah, so, you know, as soon as it gets here, we'll, we'll get it licensed and put on the road, um, and that should alleviate some of the bin issues as well.
And a reminder that there are bins at the high school.
Those bins will be moved to Northern Lights. We're currently working.
Okay.
Letting the school know that we are moving them. Um, the school is more than welcome to have maintenance bring their stuff to either the facility or to use the bins. It's not, but they can't use some, they can. So we're moving them all. With limited staff, we have limited staff, we have to live within our means, um, it's hard to monitor all those sites and clean it up. This kind of consolidates it for us. Um, and so far, we think it's going well.
Yeah, and I think we're even seeing, we just see a lot of contamination in there, even when the bins are not full, people are recycling, I mean, they're just putting garbage in there. So, you know, this allows us to monitor that a little bit better, um, with more people coming in to the site, you know, we're hoping there's just less dumping, um, and then that gives us the opportunity to put up a camera on that site.
That's one camera for one site that cuts down our cost. Um, so, so that being said, um, I, I am working on getting signage out there, so there will be a couple of big signs that kind of lay out, um, you know, if you're not sure what to recycle, read the sign on the bin, bins, it will tell you. Um, but if people put things on the ground, they are in the city, um, we will put a QR code to the city ordinance on litter, um, and we will try to enforce it.
So.
We just need to, um, get people to, and we will, we will work on education as much as we can. We've talked about having board members go up to the bins every now and again and just being helpful. You know what, sometimes people just don't know what they can put in the bins and what they can't put in the bins. And if they're unsure, they should either call and we'll have the QR code for the number to the facility, um, to the map, to NEMCOG where the bins are, you know, what's recyclable, what's not recyclable. So we'll try to make it as user friendly for them to be able to know what they can put in the bins and what they can't put in the bins. And if there's something they have that they can't put in the bins, they can always take it out to the facility and we'll take it there, so. Um, but we are not responsible for getting, paying to get rid of their garbage.
One thing I like about both Meyer and Walmart is that they have those nice little bins available for plastic bags and they'll take any kind of plastic. Is there a way we could somehow tie that information in though?
That information is, we.
It's there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Plastic, go to, go to Meyer, go to Walmart.
Okay.
That's what those bins are for, that plastic. And the reason that you can't take plastic in a recycling facility is because it gums up, uh.
Right.
Equipment, so it, you can't, you just can't take it. Um, and that plastic gets turned into toilet paper for institutional facilities, schools, um, that's what they do with that. So, um, we just have to let people know.
Right, yeah.
To go and what to do with it, but it is in our material.
Okay.
Um, but we'll push on that because plastic, um, bags in the bins is a big one because we hand sort everything at the facility. When I say everything, I mean everything. So when people take a can, a bag of cans and throw it in the bins, when it gets to the facility, our workers not only have to pick that stuff up off the ground, um, now they have to rip the bag open, get the material out of the bag, and then pick it up and put it in the proper bins. And, and it just wastes a lot of time when you're hand sorting. So, um, getting people to stop putting bags in the bins, with the exception of shredded paper, um, has been a difficult task, but we fight it. We fight it.
Township people are encouraged to come then to Northern Lights as well to, uh, do it, are there a place out there?
Behind the township hall, behind the Alpena, Charter Township of Alpena, there is, there are bins behind their facility, um, and that's, and they will stay there unless they want to haul them to Northern Lights, then everybody can come to Northern Lights. But, um, we haven't had that discussion. But, yeah, all of the townships though will maintain their bins. If they have them, we will maintain them. So Green Township, you know, Long Rapids, Austinique, um, they, they will all keep their bins. They'll still continue to pick those up, but just the city bins are all being moved to Northern Lights. Any other question? Sorry, I thought that was gonna be short.
I have nothing.
You don't know?
Since you took both my minutes and hers. No, I have nothing to.
Do, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm on an ad hoc committee. It's best I can describe it, but it has to do with Little Red. And I spoke with Rachel about funding, because everything is about funding, but we have DPI issues, well, assorted other issues. Who owns the lighthouse? Who owns the light? Who owns the land? Who owns the easement? Regardless, Rachel is able to give us some information to this ad hoc committee about capital improvement funding that might be available. So, once we sort through all those other little issues, that we may see some movement. It's in our CIP, um, as far, under one of the parks projects, but we would have to look for the funding.
Okay, um, so that's what we have on that. We're down to new business, um, and we have Montiel Bernie, Birmingham from planning, development and zoning, and she is going to talk about the transfer of funds to Alpena County Land Bank Authority to support activities of round three light elimination program grant for the three properties located on Bedford Street.
Thank you. I think you said it all. I didn't need to say anything. Thank you. Um, so you're all familiar with the light elimination program grant at this point. And so this is our next step in that process. So we are looking at all of the residential properties first. There are four of the six are residential. So we'll go out to bid for, um, asbestos and hazardous testing on those first. But before we get to that stage, we need to move forward with the purchase of those. Um, and the Alpena County Land Bank Authority is purchasing those, not the city, um, so that they can be eligible for this grant program. And so, um, as we've discussed, we are helping with, um, upfront support, um, for that to happen, and then we'll be refunded, um, once the demolition is complete through the grant program because it's a reimbursable grant. So, um, this is the next step. So basically, we are, um, looking to close, um, on those in the next couple of weeks. And, um, that would include the cost of the property, proration of taxes and closing costs. Um, and then I have an amount not to exceed there because the title company will go through the process of doing everything that they do and giving us a specific number once they do the proration and, um, calculate all of the closing costs.
Have any questions for Montiel?
I, I would like to know, once this property, once the buildings have been raised and there's property, does that just go up for sale?
So the intent is that for three of the properties on Bedford is that we'll be working with, the Alpena County Land Bank Authority will be working with Habitat for Humanity. And so they, they construct, um, homes on those three sites.
Ted Fines is working very hard with, uh, uh, the Habitat and, and the Boca Homes and all this stuff. There's supposed to be another one going up on Merchant Street, I believe it is.
Merchant Street is up, yep, and that one is.
It is, I thought he said something about another one.
Oh, maybe, I'm not sure.
I'm happy for those kinds of things like this, so. Uh, I'm looking forward to when, uh, Rob, uh, can, uh, poke holes in those Bedford Street holds. That means that things are ready to come down on them and get going. I haven't heard whether Matt finished up with the purchase.
Not yet.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns, discussions for Montiel? No? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the transfer not to exceed seventy thousand to the Alpena County Land Bank to support activities of round three light elimination program grant for their purchase of three oh seven Bedford, three seventeen Bedford, and three twenty one Bedford.
Second. Any discussion?
Councilmember Kane.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Noak.
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek.
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Anne Gentry, Executive Director of the DDA, um, resolution authorizing application and implementation of this Michigan Shared Streets and Spaces Grant.
Do you want me to just give a overview of what we're looking at?
I think I can read it specifically.
I can read it verbatim if you want me to. Um, so Shannon from DPW, myself and Steve from Engineering have been, um, discussing pedestrian safety within the downtown area and re-envisioning Chisholm Street, especially in the expanded DA district. And so there's been a handful of grants through MDOT that have come up, and this is one, um, that is due this Friday. And it's for two, up to two hundred thousand with no cash match, which is rare. But it's really for quick wins, so what we are hoping to submit for is to update pedestrian or add pedestrian lighting along Chisholm Street. We originally hoped that would go to Fourteenth Street, but it's very expensive, so we're probably going to have to scale that back from like Fifth to maybe Ninth is what we're looking. And then, um, we've been talking to MDOT staff as well, um, for a phase two, which would be having them do a safety audit and really look at what is possible in terms of changing parking size, sidewalk widths down Chisholm Street to really make it safer, and then looking at some of the key intersections downtown for Second and Third, um, to really make it more pedestrian and bike friendly, um, because right now it certainly is not, um, in some of those areas. So this would just be for phase one, um, which would be to add pedestrian lights, um, throughout Chisholm Street, um, as far as we can go, and then as part of a larger project to assess what can be, what can be done and what's feasible since Chisholm is a highway, um, and MDOT would have to sign off on any of those changes. So really excited that, you know, there's city staff support for this and also MDOT. Um, we had a, a call with them and they seemed very open to at least looking at what's possible, um, on their street. So this resolution just needs to be submitted with the application for the shared streets program for the pedestrian light, lighting.
Anne, I just have one question. Will we continue the pedestrian lighting that's in the DDA now, or will it be different?
It'll be the same, yep. So that's something we're also looking at is how many tall posts need to be included and how many short. Um, I think at minimum, it would be the intersections would have those tall black ones, and then in mid-block would have the short black ones. So we're really trying to get a cohesive look throughout the expanded district. North Second Avenue is going to have it, yay. Um, and then Chisholm Street is our next focus.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, because I'm anti-bikes myself personally, because I got hit by a car on a bike two years ago, but I love seeing people riding bikes. And does the downtown, um, already have something that's set up then for bikers then? That's akin to what you're asking for to be expanded from Fifth to Ninth?
We don't really have anything right now, and that's, you know, our vision is really look at like what even is possible, like are bike lanes feasible? Are they safe? So that's just a big question mark that we'll be looking at in phase two and getting community feedback, um, on those elements and what's really prioritized.
Sure, yeah, I was just wondering, you know, what was the draw from Fifth to Ninth? Because I'm thinking like what's on Fifth Avenue, what's on Sixth, you know, what, what's really there? But more of the congestion really for activity for pedestrian, including bicyclists, would be in the downtown segment, so First and Third really.
Right.
So.
There would be the addition of bike lanes on the street level itself, uh, that plays havoc with the, um, on-street parking.
Yeah, we, again, we don't, that's a big question mark, you know, of what would even be possible and what would fit the community's needs, um, is really looking at downtown as a whole, you know, the core definitely has different needs than kind of our expanded area right now. So that, there's a lot more to come on, on those discussions. We're doing a walkthrough with MDOT staff in a few, next week. But this would really just focus on, you know, getting these pedestrian lights into the DDA district, and then the street layout will stay the same. Um, there needs to be a lot more discussion on, on what's possible with that and really what the needs are.
Any questions?
No more.
Motion?
I move that we accept the resolution, authorizing application and implementation of Michigan Shared Streets and Spaces Grant.
What include the number, twenty twenty-four dash zero seven?
Twenty, oh, okay, yeah, sorry, but then I'm up on the agenda, twenty twenty-four dash zero seven.
Dash zero seven.
Dash zero seven.
I'll think it.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Noak.
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Kane.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we, uh, adjourn to close session to discuss, A, pending litigation with Michael Tweth and Uncle Mike's Chicken LLC versus Food Carts Manufacturing Incorporated, HD Recovery LLC, City of Alpena, and repo cast dot com incorporated, and B, water and sewer litigation update.
Second.
Mayor Protim Noak.
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Kane.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Thought you were gonna say third, Dan.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I haven't heard you say that in a while.
It's only the end.
Okay, I haven't.
I know. Well, I'm half looking at you.
Let me have our, our usual.
Yes.
We have fun. That's the idea, we have fun. So, I always, uh, let's see, working in on his.
White House Conservancy.
Job.
I think he's doing well. Yeah, I haven't actually talked to him in a couple.
This conference will now be recorded.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it says it's recording.
It's recording.
Yep, we're back. So we're just an open session. We don't move to come back. We are just an open session. We have returned from closed session of the regular meeting of June 3, 2024, and we have action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the settlement of Michael Tui and Uncle Mike's Chicken LLC versus versus Food Carts Manufacturing, Inc., HD Recovery LLC, the City of Alpena, and repo cast.com as outlined in the settlement term sheet effective May 30, 2024.
Second, any discussion? And I'll call the roll.
House Member Walchuk.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
House Member Kane.
Aye.
House Member Mitchell.
Aye.
And Mayor Portem Noa.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move adjourned. Third.